All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The flag's right in the back there, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we need to roll call? I don't see it on. Oh, did I miss it? Oh, all right, we have the roll call, please.
Here.
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 Sorry about that. I see it now. All right, can we now please have a moment of silent prayer meditation? Okay, thank you. Okay, this is our organizational meeting, so I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the organizational meeting agenda for January ninth, 2023, as presented.
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
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 All right, now we'll move on to nominations for president. I'd like to ask for any nominations for president for next year?
I'd like to nominate Bill McCartney for president next year.
Okay. A second? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I say, oh, we have to... Do we have to approve that and then put motions closed, right? All right, so... I'm sorry, I'm messing up here a little bit. What's that?
Organizational meeting is never organized.
I know, I know, it's always a challenge. So, we have the nominations of Bill for president.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Approve that, okay. There's a second. And hearing no other nominations, can we have nominations be closed? Then a motion to close the nominations?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right, well, roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
All right, now, we vote on Mr. McCartney, right? So... So, can we have then a motion to approve the election of Bill McCartney as the Jonathan Alder School Board President for 2023?
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mrs. Delwiler?
Yes.
All right, great.
You want to be the vice president, since you got that down so well?
I do, if you don't mind. I'll get better with time. So now, can I have any nominations for vice president for the school board?
I'll nominate Sonya Walker for vice president.
Second.
Okay. Are there any nominations for the floor? Hearing none, let's close the nominations then. So then, let's go on. I'm really messing this up, aren't I? So let's go on then to approve Sonia Walker as our Jonathan Alder's Vice President for 2023. What's that?
I think we should approve the nomination first.
Oh, okay, is that where I'm messing up? All right, can we have a motion to approve the nomination of Sonia Walker as Vice President?
So moved.
There's a second, and we roll call, please.
Shiloh Ta?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mrs. Delwiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
All right. So now, we close the nominations. We still have to vote for Sonia as Vice President, so can I have a motion to approve Sonia Walker as the Jonathan Alder School Board Vice President for 2023?
So moved. I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mrs. Delwiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Yes. All right, sorry about that. Sorry about that, so, welcome, Bill. Any comments?
I've heard a little something.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for their support and trust in me to lead the board. I spent the last three years watching and learning from the experience and guidance of Chris, Steve, Shannon, and Mary Jo. In the three short years I've been on the board, I've seen a majority of the board seats pass the baton. Our teachers, administrators, and students navigate a pandemic full of uncharted territory with hybrid and remote learning, to mask or not to mask, the third superintendent in thirty years, and now we're looking at the most prospective growth our community has ever seen. I'm proud of the decision we made as a board in selecting Dr. Miller. I'm excited to continue working with him, our staff, and community, and shaping policy, and shaping and guiding policy that most impacts our future and what we all hold most dear, our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Well, please come here and take over for me and try to be a little more organized than I was, please.
You only do that once a year.
So next, we're on to 5.01, Board Member Committee Assignments. You should all have those in your agenda. So, you can all see the committee assignments. Is everyone okay with these as presented, which will just carry over from last year? Would anybody like to see any changes? Okay, I don't think we have to vote on that. So, next, we have 6.01, Agenda and Meeting Procedures, and also, which we don't have to vote on. Any comments? Next, we have 7.01, Board Meeting Dates, Times, and Locations for the Calendar Year. So, Chris has a conflict.
I do. Yeah, I thought we were discussing it tonight. Sorry, I didn't get with you earlier. Tuesdays, I work till five, so I'll be pushing it to get here by Tuesdays, on Tuesdays. It's doable, but I don't want to have...
Would pushing the meeting back be helpful, or would you rather change the day?
Pushing it back would work. I feel like six o'clock.
How would we feel about six?
I'm comfortable with six. I think maybe one of the reasons it was pushed to 5:30 is so any parents on the board or any parents attending could get to JV and varsity games, that usually are held at one Tuesday.
It's a small issue with varsity, only in the winter. I mean, basketball starts at seven thirty.
And if it's an away game, you may be straightened out.
It's home. Next month is home. And we would just have to think about, I mean, I don't know when the games are, December. December would be the only other time there's a conflict with basketball. On a Tuesday.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the reason that we are looking to change the date, so currently, it's been the second Monday of every month, but with the growth that we are anticipating, we would like to change the date because the Village of Plain City meets on the second and fourth Mondays. And so we would like for Dr. Miller to be able to go to Village Council meetings or mayor or anybody else to be able to come to our meetings if and when that happens. So we're trying to find a day that's, that works. I don't know what, what's best.
Would it help if we moved, kept it on the second Monday and moved it up a half hour? But Temple City Council...
Does anybody know what time? Seven? Okay.
Sometimes six.
I mean, we could do, we could do that and just say, meet at five?
I'm just going to add as another option. You know, we'd still be on the second Monday, and there'd be some times where we maybe run a little bit late, but if we started at five, we should have done it in a couple hours. I can make that work. So stick with the second Mondays. Second Mondays. And push it forward to... Push it, and push it up thirty minutes to five o'clock.
Are there sports conflicts on Wednesdays or Thursdays?
Yes, Wednesdays, yes. Yeah, Mondays are pretty, I think Monday's the only day that we don't have...
Monday, the least amount of conflicts. With athletic programs.
So five o'clock on Mondays, on the second Monday?
Okay with that.
So Mr. Jester, will you get those dates for us? Oh, yeah, we can just, we'll just change those back a date, okay? Okay, so we're going to do the...
I believe we will need a motion for that.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Okay, so we're set on the second Monday at 5:00 PM.
Except for the June meeting, correct? The June will be...
The June meeting is the twenty-seventh.
Except for the June meeting, it'll be the third week.
So we can still vote on 5:00 PM and second Monday, except for June.
Except for June. Okay. Okay, if we're done with discussion, can I get a roll call, please? Motion, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mrs. Delwiler?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have 8.01, Authorization of the Treasurer to Pay Bills, Request for Taxes in Advances in Tax Settlements and Invest Funds, which is standard language, it's approved every year.
So moved. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Delwiler?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have 9.01, Resolutions to Conduct Business of District Operations for Calendar Year 2023. Most of this is going to be the same, with the exception of, we're going to, currently, we've been, we've had Bricker and Eckler as our attorney, but we are going to ask to add in Innis Britain Company. And Mr., Dr. Miller, would you like to comment on that?
This is not, this is for additional options for us in case we're working with Bricker, who's working with, for example, this Drum Township and Union County TIP was working with, with Bricker and Eckler. So in this case, we might work, choose to work with a different law firm just for a different perspective. So it's additional, or it's optional, not additional counsel.
Okay. And the only other thing that had been discussed, current, current policy states that the established rate is a hundred dollars, not to exceed thirteen meetings. In the past couple of years, we have significantly exceeded thirteen meetings per year. So is there any interest in either upping that cap or removing that cap?
This is for the board member pay, is that what you're...
Correct, yes, sir.
Just historically, Bill, I think we did this probably about five years ago. If we were at eighty dollars, we upped it to a hundred dollars at that time. I think the ceiling's a hundred and twenty-five, if I'm not mistaken. But our feeling was that a hundred dollars was fine, but the folks are interested.
Is there a rule about number of meetings?
So there's no statutory cap on the number of meetings?
This past year was atypical, to say the least.
Meaning the number of meetings?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's usually once a month?
Right. And then there was maybe one or two work sessions throughout the year. So, the thirteen was still under what, what we had previous to this past year, but it wasn't out of whack completely like this past year may have been with all of our extra meetings we had.
I'm fine with things the way they are, but...
Okay. Perfect.
And just so you know, if it would change, it doesn't take effect for anyone currently on the board. It doesn't, it only happens to newly elected. Or, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep that as it is. So can I get a motion to authorize the superintendent to employ necessary personnel on a temporary basis until such time as the Board of Education is able to take official action?
It's for all of them.
It's for all of them.
Oh, my bad. I highlighted the wrong one. Can I get a motion to approve the Resolutions to Conduct Business of District Operations for Calendar Year 2023, as presented?
So moved. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mrs. Delwiler?
Yes.
So that concludes our adjournment of the organizational meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn the organizational, the January organizational meeting of the Jonathan Alder Board of Education?
So moved. I'll second.
Roll call.
Shiloh Ta? Yes. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mrs. Delwiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
I think we see now why it's an organizational meeting.
Yeah. Okay, next. We're going to call, I'm going to call the January ninth, 2023 Regular, Regularly Scheduled Board Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Blacker?
Here.
Mrs. Delwiler?
Yes, here, yes.
Present.
Here. Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Next, 12.01, Can I Get a Motion to Approve the January ninth, 2023 Agenda for the Jonathan Alder Regular School Board Meeting, Please?
So moved. I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, 13.01, Can I Get a Motion to Approve the Minutes from the December twelfth, 2022 Regular Meeting, Please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Delwiler?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, next, 14.01, Excellence in Action Staff Recognition Award. Dr. Miller, you have the floor.
Thank you, and I appreciate that everyone's here. Sorry that you had to go through that now for the important information that I think a lot of you are here for. So, Mr. Jester and I went back and forth at the beginning of this year. How can we recognize our hardworking staff members, teachers, certified and qualified staff members? And we went, we thought about different ways of doing this, and this is just one phase of how we plan to recognize our outstanding educators and staff members and faculty. It is a staff-to-staff or colleague-to-colleague nomination. This first teacher, who was nominated by a colleague or another teacher, is Ms. Bryce Schwartz. Ms. Schwartz, if you would, stand up. We want to recognize you this evening for just the outstanding individual and educator that you are, so, I won't put you on the spot. I'm not going to ask you to speak, you can if you want, but I want to share a few things with you, okay? Ms. Bryce Schwartz, Intervention Reading Teacher at Monroe Elementary, consistently advocates for Monroe students. Monroe teachers go to Bryce for guidance with instructional decisions and reading, and she is viewed as a leader in the building. She gives her best effort to her job every day and always goes the extra mile to make sure tasks are completed and to help others. Bryce constantly reflects on the processes of MTSS and reading interventions to make them better for our students. Bryce doesn't give up on students that are struggling. If a strategy isn't working for that student, she reaches another way to reach that student with what they need. And I know that that was the good stuff, but here comes your nomination. Bryce works diligently and with such extraordinary passion for her career. She does everything in her power to ensure that all of her colleagues are set for interventions and understands the strongest ways to differentiate for her students. She works in incredible ways with our students and fights for their growth. I have watched Bryce work to the bone to ensure that all of our students' needs are met, that all of those students that need or require intervention are receiving it. And while things have been very difficult, she remains optimistic in her goal to close the gap. On top of being an extraordinary title teacher, Bryce is a building representative for the JAEA, organizes literary nights, and leads our way through MTSS data. Bryce is a Jonathan Alder parent as well. So, congratulations. I would like to have a photo op with our board members.
I do want to say thank you to the lady and my colleagues. You guys are amazing.
If you guys want to just go around, it doesn't matter wherever you want to stand as a group. I can maybe, or just back there. So if you just want to kind of stand yourself there and make sure I can get everybody in. All right, I'm going to take a couple. Take the first one, three, two, one. And then one more, three, two, one. Anybody else? Anyone else? All right. Three, two, one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, too, for inviting my dad.
Mr. McCartney, with your permission, I'd like to ask to rearrange my report now instead of this next presentation, because we've had some middle school students that have been waiting very patiently. I'd like to do a little teasing. Then they want to leave with their parents, they can, but they're going to want them to stay.
Absolutely.
So, January School Board Appreciation Month. I don't know if you guys noticed this sign here from Monroe. Something I didn't request, it just showed up on my desk last week, so I thought that that was pretty special. But I wanted to personally thank each of you for your dedication, devotion, commitment, and your support and service to this district and our students, our families, and this community. You support me and the administrative team and the teachers. I just thank you from the bottom of my heart. As a small token, we have some middle school students here with us. They're going to be handing out a gift. They came over to the Think Big Space last week and put a few things together, so they're going to have to deliver that to you guys now. So we have Cade, Ella, Adeline, Cora, and Tegan.
Thank you, Mr. Van Ever.
Why don't you guys stay here and just kind of stay up there? So you can stand, and then we'll see if the four of us will just maybe come behind and then stand.
Yes. Here you guys, hold one of these. Here it is.
Beautiful, thank you. Here's one.
All right, is everybody ready? Three, two, one. Take one more here, three, two, one. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Students and families, you're more than welcome to stay, but you're welcome to step out if you'd like to. It's up to you. I think this was Cora's second participation.
I was going to say, yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you, Cora. Sounds like you're going to be a regular.
She knew what she wanted, she came right in and asked for you.
Was she on the bike at Plain City?
No, no. The last meeting at Monroe, when they did the presentations for the Think Big Space.
Oh, okay. So I had a few more things I wanted to report on, but I'm going to share some information electronically with the school board. And on December twentieth, we had an Outstanding Strategic Planning Committee, and it was just very valuable information from Jason Stanford and Jody Carney regarding the growth of Plain City. Jason is newly hired as an Economic Development Manager for Plain City and is doing an outstanding job communicating with us. The Plain, Village of Plain City will be hiring a company by the name of Montross to do an economic development growth study, starting this month. And Jody and Jason are going to share those figures with us. I think that's going to help us and steer us in the direction that we need for our master plan and moving forward, being able to make some decisions, I'm sure. So at this time, I think, can I move into the presentation?
Yep. Yep.
So we have some guests with us from Madison County, Rob Slane, Madison County Administrator, and Mr. Kel, David Kel, Madison County Director of Economic Development and Planning. Thanks for being here with us. The floor is yours. Can I take it off?
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate you having a little time in your schedule for us to speak tonight on the Okra and Solar Project that is under consideration here in Madison County. I believe it was maybe a few weeks ago, a month ago, that Dr. Miller came to our Commissioner's Board Meeting. It was kind of an out-of-nowhere invite, and I apologize for that, but essentially, during our meetings, we've got a very loud, and we feel a minority group of opposition to the Okra and Solar Project. And considering that the local school district is a significant benefactor of these projects, we wanted to reach out to the school and to get their opinion or ask them to formulate a position or not. And in order to do so, we wanted to be able to provide you with some information and, of course, field any questions that you may have. And I can answer questions from the audience as well. So, that's kind of the reason why we're here, just to bring everybody up to speed. The Okra and Solar Project is an eight-hundred-megawatt generation facility. It is located on what was referred to as Orleton. It is located on what was referred to as Orleton Farm for many, many, many years. Midwest Farms now owns that property. We're looking at about 6,000 acres that will be consumed with that project. And that's kind of it as a high, high-level view of the project. Now where the local school district comes into play is that if that project comes to fruition, there is significant revenue that will be provided to the school district, which we have here with us today. And I will ask Mr. Kell to go over that briefly. So you can't have the floor because it's mine.
No, so I will keep this very high level, go and answer questions, papers that you have. There's extras if anybody wants to take a look at that's perfectly fine. This was provided to us by the company that's going to be, would be constructing and operating the solar farm. But just a quick kind of overview, you look at the top, it'll be the assumptions. They talk about the pilot, payment and taxes that would come down using the state program for solar projects. And then there's also a service fee. If you look at the acreage and simple math, the pilot, 7,000 per megawatt acre and 800 acres, annual pilot of 5.6 million. We'll go to the different taxing districts and we can break, well, we have that broken down. I can go into that quickly in minor detail. And then if you look at 2 million with a service fee times 800, or 2,000, I'm sorry, megawatt acreage at 800 acres, you would have 1.6 million going directly to the county's general fund.
800 megawatt.
800 megawatt, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. And this will be the total lifespan of 35 years. So if you look at the annual allocations, as we, the company broke it down by the school districts, you have a little piece in London School District, but primarily it's in Jonathan Alder School District. I'll just go ahead and jump into the far right column. Now, there's a couple of columns in the back, but that's more county-related. But on the far right column, you'll see the pilot and talks about the per-year payment towards the local school district. In this case, London would give about 142,000. Dr. Miller will tell you that the superintendent of London is a little envious of what the position that Jonathan Alder may be when it comes to income for these projects. But if you jump down, well, if you look at, for Jonathan Alder, the annual payment would be right around 3.2 million. You look at that for the term of the, term of the total life of the pilot, and that's actually, don't confuse it too much. But if you jump down to the summary, you see where Jonathan Alder is. You can see the annual payment, 3.2 over 35 years, a total payment of 112. All of those round up to say 113 million will be going to the school district over 35 years from this project, direct to schools. That's a quick breakdown. Sorry for a little confusion with all the numbers, because that's what you're looking at if this project was to move forward, which is why, again, there's different size vocalizing support and opposition. But it's important for you guys to see the numbers because other school districts and county are going to be benefiting from these projects as well. So turn back over to Rob.
Yep. So Dave mentioned pilot, and that stands for payment in lieu of taxes. So this is a tax incentive program. 7,000 per megawatt, that is state-defined. So that is simple math of 7,000 times whatever the plate on the facility says. So it doesn't have to necessarily generate 800 megawatts. If it's 400 megawatts, the payment remains the same. If it's above that, which theoretically it can't be, but the payment is the same. There is a service fee of $2,000 that's been added to that. Higher, higher vice code allows us to do that. So that's another $2,000 per megawatt. That goes directly into the county's general fund. The 7,000 is broken down by village. As Dave said, you can see that there's different task taxing districts there and what they receive. There's another program, which I always mess up the acronym, which is the Ohio Air Quality Control something something. That allows a little bit more flexibility. For example, if, say, you wanted to build a new, I don't know, baseball field, football stadium or something like that, you could get that money upfront versus waiting for those payments to come in. It's up to the company to decide if they want to go the route of pilot or if they want to go the air quality improvement control something something.
But are the numbers the same regardless?
Yes. So the county has decided that the numbers will be the same. But there is some leeway there as opposed to if there are projects available. If there's not anything and we just move ahead, it'll be that same 9,000 per megawatt, just the same as what the pilot is. The reason why some companies are going with the air quality is that it's not as strict as pilot. And one of those is that with pilot, 80% of the workers have to be domiciled in Ohio, Ohio domiciled. So they're having difficulty, just like everybody else, finding that 80%. There's a few other small nuances there, but that's predominantly one of those drivers.
Now, I had a representative from Savvy, they asked to be here today. We said, let's have a just, let's engage you today, but they're willing to speak to the board and determine when the time is right.
So I should have mentioned earlier, but we are not here to promote the project. We are not here to object to the project. We are just providing you with information to do with what you may. And if you decide that this is something that you think you would like to see happen in your school district, then I would encourage you to discuss this further with the county commissioners or a letter of support or a letter of objection. So that's really it at a high level, all in a nutshell. We can get into a lot of the different details. If you have any questions, I mean, the details on the composition of the solar panel and the grading and fill and the technicalities behind it, if you'd like to. There's a lot of misinformation out there. We're putting together a white paper now that hopefully will dispel some of that misinformation. And again, not promoting, the white paper is unbiased, so it's not promoting. It is also identifying those acreages that will be taken out of production and how much, how many bushels of corn and beans will be taken out of production and a few other things. So it's not just leaning one way or the other. It's just a good piece of information for the decision-makers to be able to refer to when needed and make the final decision. Now, the final decision. The Okra and Project, it got grandfathered in on Senate Bill, was it 62, 68, whatever, which, which basically said, they, it got grandfathered in under the previous conditions except for an ad hoc committee. So this ad hoc committee is formed. It has representation, one representative from the county commissioners, one from township trustees. I think we're dealing with three townships here. So one representative from those three townships. They go to the ad hoc committee, they plead their case, they vote. High, is to the higher-powered siting board. And then a decision is made whether or not that commit will then go on to the, to the next phase.
And that committee is made up of seven individuals. Rob mentioned two local men, five at the state level, the Department of Ag, Department of Commerce, and there's a few others there, too.
Public health, I think, and it's a multidisciplinary board. So that's scheduled, that agenda will be coming out here, I think, within a week. So the schedule, when those, that committee will be meeting. So I don't want to rush anybody, but if you do feel strongly one way or another, you may want to contact your council, your township trustees and your county commissioners. I will say the township trustees are in opposition. The Township Trustees Association is in opposition as well. So do that information with what you may. So.
What's the ideal time? I mean, when is ideally, when would it start? When would the project start?
Do we have a construction?
So I, I don't think this one is in even the design phase yet.
No, it's, I think they're still doing the public engagement phase. So you're talking probably later this year, not next year. Well, my best guess is.
So they've met the requirements of the public meetings. They have a basic footprint. They have secured the land, to my knowledge. That's, again, Midwest Farms is that owner. This is a significantly large project of 6,000 acres and 800 megawatts. So I, I'm hesitant to guess when, but I would think at least a couple of years before construction would begin. I could be off the mark.
It could be through, you know, later this year, next year.
Yeah, so it's approval.
You look at the, they got stacks and stacks of books that get turned in reviews.
Literally, it's about this thing. So they go through this whole permitting process. If you jump on the Ohio Power Siting Board's website, they've got a flow chart, how everything happens. They've got all of the projects in the state of Ohio that are up for the permitting process. Comments, good or bad, are there, so you can feel free to make those comments.
What was that, what was the website again?
It's the Ohio Power Siting Board. I'm not sure exactly what the address is, but it's pretty, you know, if you do a search for that, it'll, it'll pop up there. So once it goes through the permitting process, there's a whole bunch of other things that they have to do. That's why I'm just guesstimating of that construction. I would, I would think that it would be a couple of years in, in construction before it goes into production. But then, once it goes into production, that's when you start receiving your payments. So either pilot or air quality. That can be with pilot, that'll get to the county auditor's office and then be distributed to the school district. If it's air quality control, we can do it that way. What payment can be made directly from the contractor or the owner of the project to the school district. So.
Do you know what the 6,000 acres is currently generating revenue?
I do.
Or tax revenue?
That I don't.
We could get that information to you. We could talk to the ours office, I can make a call tomorrow or just go upstairs.
And I can give you an example. Big Plain Project, which is 192, 95, 96, some megawatts, significantly smaller. That farm, Farms, was about $68, $69,000 in tax under CAUV, which is a calculated agricultural use value program. And needless to say, that is a drop in the bucket compared to what this will bring into the tax base in comparison. It's Madison Plains is a huge waterfall for those folks. But it's, it's a few million dollars injected into, into that tax base. So just in comparison, it's, I don't want to say lopsided, but it's kind of lopsided.
So you said this was generated by the company? And this has a total life of 35 years? Is that guaranteed for 35 years?
Yes.
So the payments, from the date that the payments start, it'll be guaranteed for 35 years?
Yes. Yes. So along with that, they have a decommissioning bond. So if, say, we find this new incredible energy source tomorrow and we're not using solar anymore, they have a decommissioning bond where they have to come in and remove all the equipment and return it back to its original state, agricultural state.
Is that possible?
What's that?
Is that possible to do?
Yeah, so they pull out all the panels. The only thing that's left behind is some copper wire that's pretty deep in the ground. But from everything, we've been told everything indicates that it will be able to be farmed again after 30 or 35 years. And again, I'm not trying to be a proponent, but from what we're being told is that the ground is actually going to be in better shape because it is.
Been fallow for 30 years.
Fallow for 35 years, just like set aside for CRP. It doesn't have the herbicides, pesticides, the chemicals that's typically associated with agricultural practices. Now, Madison Fields, which is Mechanics Fairbanks School District, that company, which is the same company, they received a grant, I can't remember if it was federal or state, for about $2 million to research and farm between the rows. So they're going to put that in hay when that project is complete. So they're looking at all different avenues to keep the ground in agricultural production, but yet be able to harvest the solar energy as well.
Are there, do you, have there been any projects, not solar, obviously, at this point, but any other projects that there's been a decommissioning fund in Madison County that you know of that's been used to this point?
No, no.
Not, not solar, obviously, because solar hasn't been around that long, but any other projects?
I'm not sure. I don't think so, but I'm not sure I'm a really good source to answer that question or not. So back to that decommissioning bond, it's reviewed every five years due to inflation. So whatever the inflation rate is, adjust that bond. But again, it's intended to be able to have the money set aside and come in and rip everything if the need be. Now, if you ask a general contractor on the solar side, they'll tell you it's not going to happen and we'll just come in and put new panels in. So.
Does the, do the county commissioners feel confident that the decommissioning bond is sufficient to return the ground to its usable? Because my understanding of most of those bonds is by the time that they're up, there's not nearly enough money to cover to get them back to where they need to be.
Yeah, so it has to be adjusted and has to have a certain amount in for the decommissioning. If not, then the, the, I don't necessarily want to call it a tax abatement, but that they're in violation of their payment and lower taxes or air quality control program. So they'll get hit with some significant taxes and, and I'm not sure if there are fines involved, but that money has to be there in order for them to, to qualify and comply. So right now, the commissioners are pretty confident, but we're just not confident that it will return to agriculture. Because basically, as I mentioned, the contractors that have worked out west, have done this sort of thing, they've basically said they just come in and replace the panels. The average lifespan is about 20 to 25 years on a panel. And that doesn't mean it just stops working. It just means that it starts to produce or collect a little less energy as time goes on.
You said there was a paper that you were putting together?
Yes, and I brought everybody copies. It's just not complete, like I haven't been able to cite my sources yet and that sort of thing. So, but where's all my teachers and bibliography?
How will we be able to access that once it is? Or how will people be able to?
Yeah, so I'm going to. Yeah, but the intention is to have it on the county's website, so everybody can, can look at it. Because like I said, there's a ton of misinformation out there. And people say, you know, good or bad, well, I Googled it and it says this. Well, you can Google any find, anything to find what you're looking for. Doesn't mean it's an incredible resource, source. You know, hey, on Facebook, it said this. Yeah, I get that, but you know.
Can you, can we request that you send a copy of it to Dr. Miller when you get it done?
Absolutely, and we'll send the link as well and send you a copy as well. But I can have these, or I can pass these out, pass them along. So there's two pages there.
Is it just two pages?
Yeah, yeah, take the first two pages and pass it along. And like I said, it's incomplete, but I think it'll, it touches on some of the real, the hot topics right now, the hot buttons. And then um going back to um what Mr. Kell had presented, we we have some figures from our auditor's office as well. They're a little different just because of the acreage. Um, but we're we're pretty confident they're they're somewhere in the ballpark.
And I I brought them, I didn't want to bring it up and cause more confusion because there's so many numbers. I can get that property as well.
It's just they're estimated numbers right now.
Yeah.
Because we're not sure exactly how many acres will be consumed. It'll be six thousand in sixty-three or six thousand, six hundred. We don't know, or five thousand, something until the final design of the project is is nearing completion.
So anybody in the audience have any questions?
If not, this will be the first time ever that we've talked about this subject, that we didn't have questions.
Better take your phone and go then.
Yeah.
Roll it up here a few minutes, so.
Well, thank you for, thank you for coming and presenting to us.
You mentioned another one in Madison County that are others in the works or?
So we have three uh under construction right now. So it's the Big Plain Project was the first. Uh, Fox Squirrel was the second. I didn't come up with that name. Um, and then Madison Fields is the third. And Springwater is close.
And that's over in West Jeff's District.
Yeah.
It splits, I'd say, I think, I think sixty-seven percent is Madison County.
It's like ninety.
Is it ninety?
Yeah, ten. Yeah. So there's just a a tiny emit amount over in in Franklin County. But those for those three projects are are under construction.
Right.
So I I will be honest with you, if you drive by one of them, at least like Big Plain, that is far along, it it's not pretty. It's not pretty because it's all, you know, dirt, heavy equipment and so forth so on. But most of the projects, at least that we've seen, at have been completed and look tremendously.
And uh scale aside, you said this was six thousand acres. How how big are these other ones?
Uh, so I want to say Big Plain is right around two thousand acres. I think Madison Fields is somewhere around that as well. Uh, Fox Squirrel is five hundred and some megawatt. Um, so I I want to say that's like in that forty-five hundred.
Approximately.
Yeah, five thousand.
Yeah, forty-five thousand, yeah.
Acres. So those are, they've been through the permitting process, they're they're under construction. Those those will happen. Oak Run, why we're here today, is up in the air. So it's just really trying to figure out, gauge the temperature, engage all the constituents, find out where everybody stands, and not saying that you have to take a position or not, but if you if you feel strongly uh one way or another, you should you should reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have public comments. Mr. Jester? None. Okay, we'll move on to seventeen point oh one, December financials. Can I have a motion to approve the December twenty twenty-two financial resort reports as presented?
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion here?
I'd love to add, uh, we're in the uh middle of the fiscal year and everything is pretty much on track so far. So some timing issues that we won't see come into play until the second half of the fiscal year, but I'm still pretty confident that we'll go home in our projections this year. Um, Audit, it seems to be going uh pretty well. Uh, hopefully that'll wrap up then uh this month. We'll probably start seeing some communication about that, but uh I think it seems to be going pretty smooth with that too, so.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Blackett?
Yes.
Is it that one?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have seventeen point oh two, Acceptance of Tax Rates and Revenues for twenty twenty-three. Can I have a motion to approve, to accept the tax rates and revenues as presented by the county auditor for twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackett?
Yes.
Is it that one?
Yes.
Yes. Next, seventeen point oh three, Grants and Donations. We have a hundred and fifty-five dollar anonymous anonymous donation to the Think Big Space, a two hundred and twenty dollar donation for unpaid school fees from New California Presbyterian Church, a hundred dollar donation from Patricia Anderson to P C E S Cafe for Negative Accounts. Can I have a motion to approve the grants and donations as presented?
So moved.
A second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackett?
Yes.
Is it that one?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. So next, we have reports. Did you have anything else to add beyond what you already did?
Anything else, and I don't, I didn't receive a toll report from.
Dr. Mil- or Dr. Yeah, um, I can, just a a brief update. So as of last Thursday, we had six hundred and twenty-eight applicants. And at this time last year, there was five hundred and forty, and the year before was three hundred and thirty-three. So the numbers are still growing considerably. The one one thing to note is only two hundred and thirty-one requested full-time. And so that will keep us below, if you remember, we've been discussing for about a year, the if full-time students at tolls or moving them back home, halftime, that kind of thing. So currently, as it currently stands, all of the students that have requested full-time tolls will be able to accommodate. And so none, it shouldn't affect, we shouldn't have to deal with any of the things that we're worried about.
Do you know what that number is, like?
It's about five hundred.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, yep.
But that's five hundred for every session at school.
Yeah, that was five, that's.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, five hundred for, that's for lo- level one and level two. Yes.
And you're at two.
Well, two, excuse me, two hundred and thirty-one of the applicants. I'm not sure what the number that are currently level one, that'll be level two for next year. But he said that it's two thirty-one in it, so we'll still be under the number, so.
And when is, when does the application close?
M L K, I think, Martin Luther King Day. So what is that?
It's Monday.
Monday?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to Personnel Consent Items. We have nineteen point oh one, Employment, and nineteen point oh two, Consider the Employment Personnel Consent Items. Can I have a motion to approve the employment and personnel consent items as presented?
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion?
I was just wondering what a home instruction tutor is. He like goes into the home and tutors?
So we had a student, I can have this call speak on this, but I, we had a student that was injured and is not able to attend school for a certain period of time.
Had surgery.
Had surgery. And um Mr. Green will be doing instruction at home or will the parent be transferring to the school?
Kind of in the past, so it happened in in December, student's already back at school. But it was during a few weeks, student was not allowed to go to attend school on recovery because of safety issues during the surgery. That student started going to the home, but then the parents started bringing the student in after school near the end of it. So a combo of having that disruption, that's splitting, and all the other kids were gone, so there was no risk.
Nothing else? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Is it that one?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackett?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have nineteen point oh three, Classified Substitute Pay Rates. Can I have a motion to approve the classified substitute pay rates as presented?
So moved. I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call.
I appreciate this, by the way, this comparison and this whole thing. I really appreciate that.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Mrs. Blackett?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have twenty point oh one, New Policy for Second Reading. And this is in regards to naloxone. Can I have a motion to approve the policy updates as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Is it that one?
Yes.
Motion carries. So our next regular board meeting will be Monday, February thirteenth at the junior, at the junior high at five P M. Next, I'd like to have a motion to break for executive session for discussion of the of employment or compensation of an employee or official, the purchase of or sale of a property of at competitive bidding, and specialized details of security arrangements.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. McCarty?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackett?
Yes.
Is it that one?
Yes.
Yes, and there will be no action taken after executive session. Thank you all for coming.